Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Regular Meeting. Today is February 8th, 2017, and it's 8:09 PM. Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Mayor Pranja?
Here.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Here.
McMorro?
Here.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Engineer?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk? Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic of its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. The signed die and reorganization minutes of January 1st, 2017, were distributed to all council members. Have a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the correspondence that we received for the period?
We received correspondence privileged and confidential from Tax Appeal Attorney Eric M. Bernstein.
Thank you. May I have the claim for the period approved and entered into the record by the Finance Committee Chairperson, Councilwoman McMorro?
Yes, Mayor, I've reviewed the vouchers and moved that the bills be paid.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
You have a roll call?
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up to the public and ask for a motion, I just want to explain that we are going to discuss a matter that I think a lot of people will come out here for tonight, which is the feasibility study for Witty Field. Our Borough Engineer, Mr. Andrew Hippelit, is here tonight to just introduce it. We are going to schedule a special meeting, at least one special meeting, to discuss it in detail. So while your comments are welcome today, you may have more, you have another chance to discuss it further. Have a motion to open up to the public, please.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
And Mayor, if I could, I think we've also agreed that after his brief presentation tonight, if anyone has questions, we're going to reopen on the Witty Field matter, just for that. So if you want to reserve your comments on that matter till after you hear the engineer, we will do that.
Okay, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. Thank you, that microphone's kind of high, so we'll lower it for you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Christina Cutrone, I'm not a resident of Englewood Cliffs, but I'm here to make a presentation. I'm the president of an organization called WE DO of Bergen County. WE DO stands for Women Empowered Democratic Organization. Our mission is to help, support, and encourage Democratic women to get involved in public service at both the local and the county level. So every year, we travel the county and we present Certificate of Achievement to those Democratic women who have successfully been elected and reelected again at the local and the county level. Unfortunately, due to some scheduling conflicts of many reorgs being on the exact same day at the exact same time, we couldn't get here, but I'm here today on behalf of the entire organization to present Councilwoman Ellen Park with a Certificate of Achievement to congratulate you and thank you for serving the residents of Englewood Cliffs.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, thank you.
Nice to see you.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Yes.
Hi, Deborah Sabari, 106 Hollywood. I'd like to ask again for the monetary value of the tax appeals that you went into closed session to discuss, I guess it's two or three meetings ago?
Right, and I told her I had just received that paper. I have to just ask, am I allowed to just give that paper out, does she have to formally just send an email to us, is that, and say, can I have that paper?
I'm not sure what paper you were referring to.
We had tax appeals.
That you approved by resolution of the council?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to start a practice with everybody, but one paper's...
Yes, do you do an Oprah for that, or if you have done one, then now we apparently have the information that you need?
Wow, so I have to now go back and do an Oprah to get an answer to a question that I keep getting told I'm going to get at the next meeting?
Do you have the answer?
Okay, I mean, I'm asking for an amount, I'm not asking for the piece of paper, I'm asking you what the total value of the tax appeal is.
I don't have that.
So there were seven tax appeals for four years each, some of them were for two...
Right, and I made sure that we got that information for you.
So, but if you have the paper, you have the amount.
I don't have it with me.
But you just asked if you could give it to me?
No, Frank, but I'm not writing this down.
Okay, so I guess that leads to my next question, because since I don't know what that number is, last year, before the budget was approved, right, there was 295,000 in tax appeals that were paid out, that weren't put into last year's budget. How does that happen? How does it not become part of the budget? You can't say you didn't know it was going to happen because you had already agreed to those appeals, they were paid before the budget was approved, but yet we went out for an emergency appropriation at the end of the year to put them into next year's budget. So I'm asking you, as a council, how does that happen? That a budget doesn't have a number that large in it if you knew that it was happening? You had paid it out before the budget?
I will answer what I know, but I think that you did also ask that question to the CFO.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
That's a different question, I'm going to get to that one, too, because I still don't have the answer to that.
I'm not a CFO, I'm a liaison and representing the Finance Committee right now, so we know...
This isn't only to you, this is to the board, because you voted on an emergency appropriation for the tax appeals that were paid in 2015 prior to your approving the budget.
Right.
So I don't think, you don't have to be an accountant to answer this question, it's just facts. You approved it, it wasn't in your budget, so I'm asking...
Well, I think I could clarify this.
I still haven't been able to respond, but she keeps cutting me off.
I think I can clarify.
Absolutely.
Those amounts, excuse me, those amounts were not finalized until after the budget, so I couldn't do anything until after the budget.
They were paid before the budget.
They weren't finalized, I just checked what was that?
Mayor, all I was going to say was that we're advised by the CFO on how to handle, and the auditor on how to handle those things. So in answer to your question, Lizette, can you specifically get that answer from either the CFO or the auditor? But to come up and ask any one of us as council members why the CFO or auditor may have directed us or advised us, I can't speak for them, but I can get you the answer from the professionals who advise us, because they advise us.
Okay, I'd like to get the answer from the professional, and also, I guess I will Oprah to ask what the tax amount is, is that not public information? What, in fact, you approved as far as the monetary value of those seven tax appeals? I have to Oprah that?
Well, first of all, yes, you do, there are only certain things that are required to be given over the counter, such as past ordinances and signed resolutions. If you go into the Building Department, you can look at plans on file right then and there, but there is not a requirement that there be an immediate handing over of a settlement times seven different matters. And my suspicion is that they have been, they would have been seven separate resolutions, seven separate settlements, and that there isn't going to be a total number, you need all seven of those matters.
No, I don't.
To get to that amount.
I want to know how it's going to affect the budget, so I really just need the numbers.
This year.
Right, I need the numbers as to what the agreement is and how you work that out, whether it's a credit, whether it's a check, you know, however it is.
Okay, well, typically as well, and I don't know what happened last year or the year before the year before, but for example, there are three tax appeals on tonight's agenda.
I know.
They are all credits against future tax bills, so no checks are written to anyone. I don't know about the seven matters you're inquiring about. What I would suggest, not to give advice, well, I guess, what I would suggest is Oprah requires you to be pretty specific on what you want, you can't just say, I want the number. You have to ask for a document that has the number. So what you really need is seven different documents for each of those tax appeals. Now, that's not just...
I'll do that, I'll do that, I think the transparency, you're making it very difficult to get an answer to a very simple question.
Okay, but let me just also say this, the CFO is probably in the budget process right now, he probably has the number, and at some point, it's going to be available.
I just wanted to jump in for a second. Debbie has been here, and she's been very patient in trying to get that information, we did not have that information, and I did go and try and find it for you, and when I saw you that night at the bicycle club, I said, oh, I'm so happy we finally got that number for you. So, I mean, we're doing...
Exactly, you said you got the number for me, and I'm here asking what the number is.
Well, I didn't know that you were going to come...
So, you know, let's not do the labor, I will put in an Oprah, okay? All I'm trying to do is to make sure that everything is covered in the budget again. So that's my concern, is that I want to see how this is going to affect the budget, I also want to see, you know, what's going to happen this year with the DEA funds. Last year, there was over 200,000, that was taken from a DEA fund to go into the budget to offset...
It was 107,000, not over 200.
Okay, 107,000, so is there more money coming in?
Debbie, were you, as respectful as I can answer this, were you at the budget meeting? I don't remember.
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't make that.
No, that's okay, it's okay.
But I do depend on everybody that was voted in to represent this town to be able to answer my questions.
Just to let you know that I thought we had a great budget meeting, we spoke in detail about everything, I mean, every department, and I'll give you as much information as we have at this moment, but every department line is looking at, and we're going to be adequately putting in...
So when will the public have that information, so I can go through the numbers? We don't get it in draft, right?
No, we don't get that.
We handed it out at the meeting, everybody who was there had...
So if I come to the meeting, I can get a copy of the draft?
We were told not to hand it out at the meeting, but we spoke to it because it was too preliminary.
I was going to speak on Finance in my committee report, Debbie, and I'll go into detail about that.
Okay, so you'll let me know when I can come to the next budget meeting, and I guess voice my concerns, because this is not...
The budget meetings are publicly noticed, we are working on picking a date for the next public meeting.
Okay.
You'll be invited, as is the rest of the borough.
All right, so I should look for the sign outside, or daily check the website to see when those meetings are? Because I'd like to take part in them.
We notice them just like we notice every other meeting.
Okay, so I'll...
You can find it anywhere you want.
I'll Oprah my questions regarding last year's appeals and the current, right?
And I'll let you know, we don't know it yet, we're going to decide tonight, right here.
Okay, so I can call you and you'll give me that information on the tax appeals?
Uh, no, you can call me if you need to know in the...
Oh, okay.
If you didn't hear it tonight.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we follow all of the...
And I just want to make sure, yes, because I don't think it was followed properly last year with the tax appeals, and that's why I'm asking the question, and this year, I'm going to spend a little bit more time looking at it to make sure that we don't grab money from places that we normally don't grab money, I don't know how the budget's going to make the budget this year.
We follow every rule, every law, every ordinance, and we rely on our professionals to advise us, okay?
And I would expect you have to.
And the same CFO has been serving this community for several years, so there's overlap between...
So it should be very easy to get the answers to my questions, then?
Well...
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. So as, you know, as these budget questions come up, I assure you folks that the budget is very important to me, and we focus hard and we do a lot of work on it. We have an available cash surplus from last year, despite the negativity you just heard. We have a budget meeting that you're all invited to, a few people showed up last week, I hope more people show up.
We had a very good turnout.
And we had a very productive work session, as reported by NorthJersey.com that sat there. And what we're doing is, we're getting credits for any tax settlements against future tax assessments, so we're not writing checks to people, that was one of the big policy shifts last year that I had implemented with my administration. The days of writing checks to people for their tax appeals is hopefully over.
I will report about the budget.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other member that...
So is there anybody else from the public who wishes to be heard? Okay, have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, you had a, all right, you just got in right before the vote.
I don't know if anybody mentioned it, but I have...
Name, sir?
Oh, Michael Tellzer, Churchill Road, non-Church Road, some sad news, one of my classmates passed away, Louis Scarrow, longtime resident, and he lived in town here, so just wanted to mention it, that's all.
Okay. A moment of silence would be appropriate. Thank you. So folks, usually a moment of silence means that we're silent, because we're honoring somebody who just passed away, so maybe in the future, we could do that differently. Have a motion to close the public portion?
Zaverta?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move down the agenda to the Resolutions 44 through 50.
We're going to read them separately.
We're going to read them separately, and we'll vote on them separately. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please do that?
Okay, Resolution 44, authorize mayor to sign Governor's Drug Alliance Grant. I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Resolution 45, award tree pruning for Borough Shade Trees. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have discussion on that, just a turn, I'm not familiar with that one.
Do you want me to fill you in?
Yeah, can I?
Okay. So at the end of last year, we went out to bid for shade tree pruning services for the borough, we received three bids, three quotes, there was one quote, the lowest two quotes were, one was at $150 an hour, which was reliable, and the other one was $149 per hour, which was Boulder, I don't remember the full name. The Borough Attorney researched them both and found that the responsible bidder was $150 per hour, which is our current vendor, Reliable Tree Service, and that is the recommendation that we're going with.
Thank you.
Wait, so are we doing the same company we...
Yes, yeah, reliable, yeah. All right, may I continue the vote? Okay, so we have a motion from McMorro, I need a second.
So moved.
Okay, Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
I second it. Oh, you say a second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Next one is 46. Appoint a full-time Recreation Director, for those that came in late, Mr. Richard Casey, who is in the audience, if you want to give a wave, we will be voting on a full-time appointment. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
I'm a little hesitant, only because I don't think we have enough information about financial, but I'll vote yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
I feel the same way as Councilman Zaverta.
Could you use the microphone?
Sure. I feel the same way as Councilman Zaverta about the finances, but the mayor stated that, you know, the CFO has mentioned that we have the money, so I'm going to vote yes, based on that premises.
Thank you. McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations, Mr. Casey.
Thank you. So, welcome to Englewood Cliffs, we're excited to have you, we've been in the process of revamping our Recreation Department, and it's yours now, so keep that momentum going.
But it's ours.
It's ours, yes, that's a good answer, we're welcome again, and we'd actually invite you to sit up here with a Borough Engineer who's going to have some plans that you can have a better view if you're up here, so welcome, and we can move on.
Mayor, if I might, I'm going to do the next three, I'm going to call the next three resolutions so that we're clear on the record, of course, there are copies of the resolutions in the packet. Resolution number 1747 is a tax appeal for Block 313, Lot 3, for 300 Sylvain LLC, who is a, which is a company owned by Ms. Martha McQuello. The settlement is for three tax years, 2011, 12, and 13, the total is $15,388, which is issued as a credit against future taxes. This is a recommendation by the Tax Appeals Attorney for the Borough. Thank you.
I need...
Hold on.
I need a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is that E. Park?
Yes.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Um, 47.
That's, we're only doing 47.
Okay, then I'll say yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Thank you. 48.
Number of Resolution 1748, a tax appeal for Block 511, Lot 6, a restaurant property at 464 Sylvain, Sylvain...
She's not from these parts, so we're going to go over this, Sylvain.
This covers two tax years, 2015 and 2016, the total reduction for taxes is $19,368 to be issued as a credit against future taxes, spread over future tax years, not a payment to the property owner. The property owner is Yay J. Realty LLC, 464 Sylvain Avenue, Sylvain Avenue Restaurant, the principal of the LLC is Dr. Dong H. Lee.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Accused, no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong button, extained is proper.
Okay.
Sorry. E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Next one is 49.
Resolution 1749, a tax appeal for Block 1009, Lot 2, property located at 12 Willow Drive, it is a residential property owned by J. Paul Joshi, 12 Willow Drive, the settlement is $1,101.12 for one tax year, 2016, and that will be issued as a credit against future taxes. Thank you.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilperson Zaverta?
Extained.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
The final resolution is 50, authorized stipend for Recreation Department and Community Events, it's actually Assistant Recreation Director and Community Events. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Extained. Yeah, that's okay, yes.
E. Park?
Missing out with the...
Yes. O.
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Thank you, so just for everyone's information, all the resolutions passed, there were a lot of yeses and a couple of extensions in there.
We're moving down the agenda to ordinances for the first reading, Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record ordinance 17-02?
We're going to have the second reading on March 8th, 2017, an ordinance limiting ordinance number 16-09 entitled, An Ordinance Fixing Salaries, Wages, and Compensation for All Salary Appointed and Elected Officers Within the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey. And that's to adjust the salary for the Recreation Director. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Who moved it, please?
I did.
Was that...
I, yeah.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Extained.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.
Again, I'm going to vote yes on the premises that we do have the money in the budget for
this.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Passes again with a public hearing on March 8th.
Thank you.
Point of order for Mayor, do we have to now have the Borough Clerk notify the public for the second reading on the higher, the police higher ordinance? No, we're going to, we were going to announce it at this meeting, that it was going to be at the March meeting.
We'll do it on March 8th.
We are going to do it at the March meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so ordinance 1701, which was, ordinance 1701, which was introduced at the special budget meeting last week, will have a public hearing as well as on March 8th, 2017, and both ordinances will be listed in the newspaper.
Thank you.
So 1701 and 02 is going to be on March 8th, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda are the committee reports. Okay, you know what, we're going to go straight to old business, and we'll come back to committee reports, because our Borough Engineer is with us, and he's looking like he's got a lot to say. So, under old business, Mr. Hippelit, we have feasibility study for Witty Field, and your name is next to it.
Do you want me to stand over there, because the cameras are over here?
Sure, I mean, the...
Actually, the camera that records is the one above the clock. Yeah, that's right. Well, it doesn't, it may not come out.
You need to get towards the middle.
Yeah, if you want to stand over here, sit over here.
Over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Right there.
We have a very strange camera.
Until we move it.
It shows the closer.
reports because our Borough Engineer is with us and he's looking like he's got a lot to say. So, under old business, Mr. Hippelitt, we have feasibility study for Witty Field and your name is next to it.
Do you want me to stand over there because the cameras are over here?
Sure. I mean, the, actually that's the camera.
The camera that records is the one above the clock.
Yeah.
That's right. Well, it doesn't, it may not come out.
You need to get towards the middle.
Yeah. If you want to stand over, sit over here and say.
Over here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right there.
We have a very strange camera.
Until we move it.
Well, a lot of people have stood there and swung at it. So I think everybody.
Want to grab one of those microphones? Yeah, yes, yes. Andy, you can get the one off the table.
So, Mayor and Councilmembers only for now, you received this report tonight. This report is a accumulation of a feasibility study which we undertook as authorized by you for Witty Field. Just a little bit of a baseline, I think, Mayor, as you said, we're going to have a detailed public meeting just to present this entire report because obviously at the Mayor and Council meeting, if I present this report, I think people are going to fall asleep, their eyes are going to bleed, and it's going to be a tough night. Saying that, I just wanted to cover like the general purpose, so we have some baseline, cover what's in the report, and at the public meeting, we can actually cover it in detail. So, the report, if you open it, the first page or the second page covers the purpose. What we were hired to do was to look at the field in general, from traffic flow, handicap access, all the athletic fields you have there, the playground you have there, the walking path you have, the surfaces that are on the field, your existing courts, look at them in general and determine if, one, there is any need for improvement, determine if the use of the field warrants improvement, determine whether the layout meets current standards because that field is literally 20-plus years old as far as its design, and determine whether it meets the current 2010 ADA regulations, would expect everything including parking. When you look at the purpose, our purpose was not just to come back to you, because I know it was an issue, and say, "We're putting synthetic turf on the field," or "We're putting lights in the field." Our purpose was to look at it, look at, like I said, use and determine what the use drives. So, the use drives field layout, the use drives field surfacing, the use drives the need for handicap improvements, it drives the need for parking, it drives the need for various amenities on the field. And when we dive into it, you'll see that we broke down the park into basically four concepts based on those theories and based on those studies. We did an actual field survey, so we went out with survey equipment, surveyed the field, surveyed the elevations, surveyed the drains. We did traffic counts. We actually went on the street, put traffic counts on the street, and we counted the number of cars that came by and the number of parking spaces available. We had somebody go out from an ADA perspective to see if the current park meets ADA standards. It does not, so that is an issue. And we looked at the surfacing of the field and worked with your previous Recreation Department and Director to kind of look at whether the uses warrant what's currently there. So currently, you have three baseball fields, baseball softball fields, and one multi-use field mostly used for soccer. And we broke down the use per hour, and then you could take hours and break it back into actually events. That generated the volumes of paper you see here. It generates four concepts for the field. Other things we do look at, which is very important for a recreation complex, is, is your adequate shelter? You have a building there, but just because you have a building doesn't mean you have adequate shelter there. Is your adequate storage onsite? Excuse me, look, is it there, is it not there? We also look towards the usage you have there and what the groups are. Is it just your Recreation Department? Is it your businesses in town? Is it travel teams that use your field? And we tried to dive a little bit into that also. Then we take all this information, develop these concepts that you'll see, and they're on fairly large sheets, and those concepts are broken down into cost estimates. Then we evaluate in those cost estimates, putting synthetic turf on the field or partially putting it on the field, putting lights on the field or not putting lights on the field, adding one shelter versus three shelters, providing handicap access to the entire park versus providing up to 33% of the park, which is more in line with the 2010 ADA regulations. So, there's a lot that goes into a park your size for Englecliffs. This is really your park. This is it. This is your big park. This is the one you own, and this is the one, if you're going to make improvements, we can give you recommendations to kind of pick off a list and say, "We really want to make these improvements." But what we tried to evaluate for you was, is once you make your improvements, what's the longevity and what's the maintenance of one item versus the maintenance of another item? And hopefully that you could put budget numbers in so going forward, the field will stay in good shape for 10-plus years or really 30 years. Because really, if you bond your improvements, it'll be a 30-year improvement. So, that's the basis for it. It's detailed. I already spoke to the Borough Clerk. The Borough Clerk is going to post this entire document online to reproduce it for everybody. It's going to be quite costly, but they're going to post it online, so you're going to go online and see not only the paper portion, the plans that are in here. My desire is to create a really good conversation at a public meeting, so if everybody that's interested reviews it ahead of time, then I make a really detailed presentation, we can have a great question and answer. I've done probably literally 100 of these in public. And I've had meetings where there's been 10 people out here and meetings where there's 350 or 400 people out there. And those meetings all have different outcomes, but what I can tell you is when a community wants to work together and come up with what's best for them, it's usually a good outcome. And almost 100% of times, the outcome is very good as long as everybody wants to work together. Great thing is you got a Recreation Director that was appointed tonight, has a lot of experience. We talked for a few minutes. He played, you know, literally high-level Division I sports. He knows the athletic field very well. I'm going to share a copy of this with him because I would like your input also. I think his input's very valuable because probably very few of us have played sports that are on one he has. And we could talk about what you think is appropriate, not appropriate, and we can maybe visit the field also. So, that's a baseline for you. And I know it's a lot to digest. I can answer some questions now if you'd like. It's really, if you may.
Well, we could open up to the public, but before we do that, I just want to take a moment of silence also for Andy's father passed away last week, so if we could just do that also. I appreciate you coming in here today. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
So, shall we open to the public?
Sure, of course.
Have a motion to open to the public on this matter? Thank you. On the paper?
On the paper?
Hi.
All right. So, does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, again, just open the microphone, state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Andrew Steiber. I live on 750 Floyd Street in the cul-de-sac, right adjacent to Witty Field. So, um, I have concerns, which maybe you're not going to cover tonight, but my concerns are the possibility of putting floodlights on the field, which will certainly affect my quality of life, living adjacent to the field. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the possibility of using some artificial turf because I'm really against that. I think that the field would do better with, it was natural, with just regular grass. I know you're probably not going to cover those two things tonight, but those are my concerns, that's why I'm here. The other thing, I'll just ask the new Recreation Director, maybe he'll answer me, perhaps talk a little about his qualifications, what he has done in the past, and how much, what is his salary going to be? Those are things that I'm interested in.
That's, the purpose of opening to the public is to discuss the fields and the Engineers' reports. And Mr. Hippelitt, if you can, would you please answer some of the questions?
Okay. Inside the feasibility study, we looked at installing lights under all four options on the fields. Now, lights, what do lights do? Lights for a field allow you to increase playtime. To want to increase playtime in a field, you have to have the usage that supports that or else it's not worth putting the lights in. So, we have lights as a cost value in the project, but we really need to dive in with the Recreation Department, the Mayor and Council, and the residents to find out if the use is there to support lights. So, I don't want to say, "Lights aren't proposed." I don't want to say they're proposed. It's really a feasibility study that says if you want to put lights on the field, it's going to have a cost, and does the use warrant the cost is what, is where that is. As far as the surface, we don't recommend synthetic turf on any field if it's not necessary. Synthetic turf is a surfacing option that allows the field to require less maintenance, thereby saving money in your operating budget because your field has too much use on it to grow natural grass. If you go to Witty Field right now, there's certain areas that are just totally worn out. There's no grass, it's bare soil, and that's an indication of overuse of those areas. So, when you look at a feasibility study, you look to say, "Can you rotate the field? Can you move them around? Can you allow healing time for a month or two at a time to grow grass?" If you can't, that may mean you need a change in surface. The report covers the idea of a change in surface. The report covers the idea of having partial synthetic turf, partial grass. It covers having all grass. If you're going to have all grass, I could tell you, based on the report, your usage is too high for all grass. You never will be able to maintain it. It's not possible. Either you have to cut your usage down or change your surface. You can't have the best of both worlds. You don't have enough fields. It's not like other municipalities work where we have another field and the other field gets half the usage. So, when one field is being used, the other field's being rested. When one field's being rested, the other field's being used. You don't have that option here. So, I do believe that it's some version of this concept, this feasibility study, that a partial installation of synthetic turf on one part and partial grass is probably going to be what we recommend. And when you read the report, you'll see we do recommend option two, which is a half and half. We'll talk more in detail on it, but your problem is, your use is too high to have all natural grass in the whole field.
Thank you. So, anyone else in the public, yes?
Good evening. Jerry Miss on Stanford Drive. Appreciate the feasibility study, and I agree probably with everybody in the room that something needs to be done at Witty Field. I'd say, first, I don't see the bare spots that you're talking about there. There is major problems with the divots in the turf, especially on the area where the soccer is. But I think that was caused by one particular event that we had at that field many years ago that we just never recovered from and was never properly corrected after that. And I think if we can do something to correct that problem going forward, the maintenance of it might not be as bad as what we need now. The study, I think, ignores one glaring issue, and I think it's the most important issue for this council to determine. You're proposing what really is a world-class facility, seems to me an industrial sports complex, but you're proposing to put it in the middle of a residential area. This proposal calls for 11 light poles around Witty Field. It calls for a proposal of usage, increasing usage up to 48,000 hours a year. I don't think we have enough kids in town to use that field 48,000 hours a year. If we're going to be using this as a money-making proposition to bus people in from other areas to use this field to raise revenue, that might be a different story. But again, I don't think that's appropriate in a residential neighborhood. Are we trying to bring in other municipalities or other school districts or whatever to use the field? How else are we going to fill 48,000 hours? And I think some of the assumptions that...
It's not, it's not, stop it, it's not 48,000 hours.
I've only read the report briefly, but that's...
The danger about that is, is it's a lot to digest in a very short period of time. And I apologize, 48,000 hours, a few can handle, it's not possible.
Well, according to what I saw in the report, it said 160 hours, I don't know if it said a week or a month, 10 months a year, 48,000 hours a year. We can look at it again, but that's what I saw. Unfortunately, I didn't have the ability to look at the report except for a few minutes before the meeting. But if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think I read it correctly.
Well, a year has 8,760 hours in it, so...
Pardon me?
One year has 8,760 hours in it, so the 48,000 is 2,000 years.
I don't know where the number came from, but if I can see the report, I can show you which page I'm talking about.
Six years.
May I?
While you look at that, do you want to comment?
Again, if you look at the report, every estimate in the report has a proposal to light the field. If Engelcliff's usage supports more games in daytime, you need a method to do that either at that complex or somewhere else. Right now, I think you have, if I remember, about 254 hours of softball on the fields per year. You have 10 some odd uses of 90-foot baseball, actual uses. You have about 50 uses of Little League baseball, and you have about 210 hours of soccer. You've exceeded the use that the field can have for this, the way it's laid out, as far as hours.
Those numbers are games or practice.
They're actual hour usage. So, the baseballs are events or games, the soccer and softball are hours of usage. That's the way we got it from your Recreation Department. A regular grass field to be maintained to a level that's playable and safe is about 14 events a week on the field, maybe as high as 20, but once you pass that, you start to break down the turf and the root stone for the turf. When you start looking at your usage, you're going to exceed that. So, either I do one of two things, either have another place to offset it and let the field grow and heal properly, or really over-maintain it. Right now, you spend, as I think we talked about in the report, $7,000 a year maintaining the field. You're short about $43,000 a year in maintaining it properly. So, you know, you have an issue of budget and do you want to spend...
Say 40,000 a year?
43,000 short a year. You need about $50,000 a year to properly maintain that size grass field. The number varies a little bit, but...
Can I ask, where do you get the $7,000 that we spend?
Um, we got it from the Borough. The Borough said they have a $7,000, I mean, that's, we were told, a $7,000 budget line up for maintenance in the field, which is, that wouldn't even be one fertilization.
I think some of that might be skewed because Little League takes care of their own maintenance.
Yeah, I don't know if that number...
Program that we implemented last year, but so, we'll check that for you.
And I apologize if I was mistaken, it's 10,000 hours, 48,000 hours over the expected lifespan of the turf, which is 10 years.
10 years, right.
That's arguable as well. In any event, we're talking about an extra $43,000 a year for maintenance on a natural grass surface. The additional cost for putting in this turf, I think, far exceeds the annual savings we're going to have if you spread it out over the lifeline. I don't think it's fair to base the average cost per hours of use the way it's done here because I don't know if we're going to get maximum usage out of this field according to this proposal. I don't think we have enough kids in town for that. And again, most importantly, as I said, we're putting this in the middle of a residential neighborhood. This is not on the outskirts of town, in the middle of a commercial area where 11 light poles and synthetic turf where kids playing until 10 o'clock at night, 10 months out of the year, is really reasonable. I lived next to the park. I lived next to the park forever. I knew what I was buying when I got into it. I was buying a house next door to the park with all the traffic that comes with it, with all the noise that comes with it, with all the litter that comes with it. I do it happily. I have many advantages living next to the park, too. But I didn't buy into this. I didn't buy into an industrial sports complex that's going to operate 10 months out of the year with lights, 100 feet from my kid's bedroom. And I think that really needs to be taken into consideration by this council. Is it going to be a benefit to some of the people in town? Yes. But when you weigh that against the detriment to the people who live in that neighborhood, I think the detriment far outweighs any benefit to the rest of the town. And I'll have more, I'm sure, when we have this meeting. I would ask, if you could, please schedule a meeting for a weekday evening, so Monday is a good time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes.
David Cigorio, 165 Charlotte Place. You're commenting on the field now, correct? Only? Okay. First of all, I have seen, let me ask you, what type of artificial turf would we be putting in and what would be used as cushion?
Obviously, we're only in the feasibility stage, so the type of turf hasn't been decided. You can, in a synthetic turf world now, there's only a few types of turf, but they're all very much the same. They're a monofilament fiber with an infill. The infill can be either ground-up sneakers and tires or cork. They now use cork, it's a more environmentally friendly infill. That is the cushion, so it's laid on top of stone, and then the drains is lower.
The estimates, is that with the cork or with the...
The cork, the cork, the price to install a cork is anywhere from $2 to $3 more per square foot than if you don't...
So, it's, I don't know what the figures were, so it's one-third more. So, I will say that I...
Not quite.
I mean, the regular tire fill is, and I've seen it in towns that are bordering from here, they use what's called tire crumbs.
Right, crumb rubber.
Crumb rubber. The crumb rubber gets into every orifice of the young person's body playing. It is known to be a carcinogen. Tires have all kinds of chemicals in there. It gets into the environment, and there's no way that we, as a town, should allow having, subjecting our children to what might or might not be, but is, if you really dig deep, a carcinogen. Having a turf field, I feel, is not necessary. I agree with the gentleman up here previously. I am very much against commercialization of the field. I think we should raise taxes enough to adequately fund the Little League and all those things. We shouldn't commercialize and subject, we shouldn't be running a business there and having all these commercials out there. I think that takes away from the purity of the child experience on the field. I am very much against any kind of turf, whether it be cork, because of the costs. I am very much against any kind of lighting, except a subtle lighting where you can use it as a walking path in the evening. I don't think we, we're not that sports wild in this town, and we don't have enough children or adults to support a huge investment. What we should be looking at is how we can maximize every single dollar. This costs, what, $30,000, this study? For a big, so we can spend hundreds of thousand dollars? Probably the $30,000 could have had substantial improvements on the field with some of the little vision and some knowledge about buildings and grounds. So, again, 30, mound on top of that, it's not going to help the quality of life of the senior citizens, especially the ones living in the area. So, I'm dead set against any kind of turf. Let's maintain natural, put in some native trees, make it as nice as we possibly can, and probably we could have used that $30,000 to make a substantial start. Thank you very much.
You're only answering clarify. Neil, I just want to clarify, I'm not sure, maybe it's a poll, we are not proposing to commercialize the field or have you outsource the field to other uses. That was not in our proposal. Yeah, we base, our feasibility study is based on the current usage your recreation department has, that's it. We're not proposing any other uses on the field.
But our objective is really to continue making Angler Cliff's a first-class community, best town in New Jersey, and to do that, we need great facilities. And that's why we're looking at this project.
Mayor and Council, Tom Polowicz, 236 Fairview Avenue. I think our kids in town deserve a first-rate facility. I live on Fairview Avenue, and if Dwight Angler decided to put up lights, me living there, I knew that that was a distinct possibility. Some people might be against it. I happen to be a baseball lifer, I love the game. I love teaching the game, love coaching the game. There are four or five other coaches here, I think that would agree with me, that the surface we have right now is flat-out dangerous. I don't know, I looked at the study. There are more, more issues with that infield, any outfield, missing turf, missing grass, just divots, it's just a really dangerous situation. And whether it be a partial turf, partial grass, something needs to be done, because someone is going to get hurt. It hasn't happened, but there's been very close calls. As for the lights, I think there's nothing better than, I grew up in Richfield, the hub, the center of a Friday night or a Thursday night or a Saturday night, was every family in town enjoying the park, the recreation, the coaches, the families, the kids running around. You know where your children are. I think it's long overdue to give the kids, just like the surrounding towns here, Fort Lee, Clubsite Park, there are towns that have lights in residential areas, and we don't have an area to move this field someplace else. It is what it is. That's where it is. I know some people will be affected, but I think for the greater good of the community and our children, I hope that lights and/or, again, I don't want turf if it's dangerous. I've read studies also, if, on rubber remnants that scare the crap out of me. I'd rather, like a tusk or a, you know, some other thing that's, I understand, more expensive, but I don't want to go home wondering if my son John is swallowing this rubber remnants, and if that's not the way to go, then, you know, you as the expert would tell us. But I know there, the CDC is doing a study right now, I think, on turf and the environmental effects. But it's long overdue that I think this town should upgrade its facilities. All the surrounding towns around us have much better facilities than we do. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, to just talk a little about the rubber issue. Some towns and clients we work for have gone the cork route and put in the more environmentally friendly infill. But I will remind you that there's a lot of panic out there about rubber and how it may cause cancer. For instance, the University of Washington coach claimed that her soccer girls' goalies were getting cancer at a rate that exceeded the national average, if not Washington's average. The Washington State Department of Health just issued a report about, less than a month ago, said they investigated it and the claim was false, so that they didn't find anything wrong with crumb rubber. And they supported, I think, 10 other state health departments nationwide that have already made the same deduction in the last two years, saying that it's your decision. If you want to spend more money to put in cork, you can do that, it's fine, there's nothing wrong with it. I don't believe they don't want the crumb rubber, but you may decide not to put turf in, you may decide to put grass in. When you put grass in, you're fertilizing it. The fertilizers in your grass are way worse than anything that's going to be in that turf field. You know, it gives a balancing act. We live in a life of chemicals. The suit I have on has an anti-wrinkle thing on it that has chemicals on it. I don't know. I mean, I can't provide your balancing for you as a community. I could just give you the facts, and then you guys decide what you want to do with it.
Okay. Thank you. You know, one of the things I said about a year ago when we first started talking about the field was, our children don't get as many practice days and game days as children, their peers in other towns. And, you know, it really starts to show when our children try to make high school sport teams, especially soccer, football, baseball, softball. So, you know, that's something also to keep in the back of your mind. Our children need to play, practice, get coached, and I thank all the coaches in the room, you all do a phenomenal job, you know, and we appreciate that, and we will continue to support you as best as we can.
Deborah Savari, Willisak Hollywood. Did this study take into account the drainage issues that we've had at the field in the past?
Yes, yes it did.
Okay, so this will take, whether would they go with turf or grass?
Right, you have, you have some issues-
There's going to be an issue, and that takes it into account in the cost of fixing it, or maybe you don't have to fix it, I don't know.
So your, your field in general has a very good subsurface drainage system, but the water can't get there in most cases. You have low points that have developed from sediment, you have low points that have developed from overuse of the field, you have soils on your field that have compacted to a level that is both dangerous from an impact point and also impossible for water to permeate through it because it's so compacted. So, if you can get the water to the drainage system, it's really good. You just, right now, the water can't get there. Any design that's done will allow the water to get there and get there very quickly.
Whether it's grass or turf?
Both will allow it, both.
Okay. My second question was, did we, did we survey, like, where the lights would be placed? I don't live on the field-
No.
But I do understand the concern of people who do live on the field. I mean, does the study take into account where the lights would be placed and how they would affect the residents? Because perhaps there isn't an issue if they're placed in the right areas?
So I-
And how about across the waters? We had that whole thing with LG, now we're going to have these big spotlights. Are we asking for problems with them, like?
So I could address, I kind of hear a two-part question, I'll cover both of them. First question, lights. Are we putting lights? I don't know. I gave, I gave a price for lights, I'm pricing them in there, I gave a price for lights that would provide little or no glare or little or no spillage. So when I say that, we're proposing, our plan, if lights are something that Mayor and Council decide to do, when I have a, let's say, a 50-foot light pole, if that light pole turns on and I'm the base of the pole, the lights will not shine past that point. LED lights nowadays can have a direct cutoff. We can actually pick the cutoffs for them. Now, if I was across the street like the gentleman back there-
Mm-hmm.
And I looked across, am I going to see a lit field? Yes. Is it going to shine my lights? No.
Is it going to shine in his child's window?
No, because the lights nowadays are so advanced, specifically with the advancements in LED, that they can shine directly downward and not outward at all.
So you're, you're saying that this gentleman lives Jason or somebody lives across, that we could actually-
The road will be-
Both people could benefit, the kids could have the lights-
Wouldn't bother, yes.
And it would not bother any of the residents, as far as light? I'm not talking about traffic and everything else, but as far as the light-
Give you a great example, East Hannover. We put in LED lights at the East Hannover Middle School. We had a big meeting, 400 people came to me against the lights. The mayor stood up there late last year and said, "I promise you, my engineer promised me, we're going to use new LED lights, you won't even know they were turned on." Lights were installed, they were put in. Mayor's a really diligent mayor with respect to his residents. The first night, the lights are on, the mayor went down, there's 14 homes. The lights are on tonight, I just wanted to check to see how you're on. They go, "We didn't even know you turned them on yet." So he went to house two, "We didn't know, we didn't even know they're on yet." And the difference between the older technology and new technology is, an LED light can direct an actual line downward, you can see where it is. I mean, I would invite anybody who wants to see it-
But I would give them the coverage, and it would affect the residents.
You can, that's a real example, it's the East Hannover Middle School, you could see it, it is an unbelievable technology.
If it works that way, I think that's a great thing. How about the people on the other side of the Hudson?
They would not have a problem.
They'd have no problem with-
Wouldn't get across the tree line.
Sounds like a good thing. Not for turf, but if it doesn't affect the residents.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
How tall are the, the light poles?
It's really a function of the level of play you want. You have a very, you have what I consider a lower level of play, you're really a Little League level. As long as you're not going to get into the higher level of high school sports or collegiate sports, which you don't have there, the lights can be lower. You could be 55-feet-ish on the poles, which is not very high, it's the height of a tree. Your trees on that side are 55, 60 feet, still be about the height of trees in Ohio.
Does that affect all of the dangers, any structure being higher than 35 feet?
The structure of 35 feet really is referring to building structures. We don't have an ordinance on it, you don't have a lighting ordinance for that type of thing, so you don't, it's not affected at all. Yeah, you also, boroughs aren't, substantial ordinances, though, we don't necessarily like to throw that out, because boroughs like to follow their ordinances. I do have municipalities that have passed sports lighting ordinances, because they have private entities that do it, but you don't have one of those.
In the health trailer, are fire sirens poles?
I don't know.
Could you have those pretty high?
Yeah.
So I actually looked into this a bit also. A lot of towns who have lit sport fields have a time cutoff, 10:00 PM or 9:00 PM, it just goes off automatically, it doesn't matter where you are in your game, the lights go off.
Yeah, the lighting systems now, the lighting systems now are highly computer-active. Everybody has one of these. The lighting systems that we use, the director, director controls it from his, from his cellphone, literally. He would set it and say, "Okay, the borough, Mayor and Council said 9:30, lights out." So if, let's say there's 22 fixtures, 20 will go out, two stay on for 15 minutes to allow the field to clear, and then the other two go out. So that gives the coaches kind of a warning that, hey, it's off. It is, it's highly programmable, and it can be utilized by anybody that has access to it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Philip Troy, I live in 23 Roberts Road. It's more of a question than a comment, but regarding this feasibility study, did we, did we do a current state on the current condition of the field? And from that current state analysis, did you raise or give a description around the liability that the town has by doing nothing? You know, because as a, as a coach, watching games, soccer games, watching baseball games, I've seen on numerous, numerous occasions where, you know, kids would be running and all of a sudden, boom, they fall straight on their face because of a divot, or I see a bad bounce on the field, hit them right in the face. And I see, and there's so many different use cases where, as I said, there's an accident waiting to happen here. And, you know, God forbid, you know, a worse injury could occur, the town could potentially be liable, could be understood, for not doing anything, for not making improvements, and so, and so maybe, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not an attorney. But, but I just want, I'd like to understand-
Good point, thank you.
What's, what is our recourse?
I hear what you say, I hear what you say, and I'm going to ask the borough engineer not to opine on what the borough's level of knowledge is or what our liability could or could not be. But as public entities, we have a responsibility to provide safe facilities, but we are also protected by the Torque Claims Act. So that involves a lot of analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Come on up, David.
It's not this comment, but I think the town has enough suits, we don't need any more suits. You know, this is, we specialize that, in that, in Angler Cliff's, any kind of flavor you want. And it's sad, because it costs a lot of money. I would recommend considering, instead of going hog wild with permanent lights, it's going to obligate us to use the field at night, and it's going to lock us into a certain field. I would advocate for portable lights and use them when you need them and install them where you want them. If the school wants to use them, they have a game at night for the parents, that would be wonderful, just install them there, roll them there. Community night out, hopefully, we can install them there. So I think the flexibility of having lights and a pool of lights that can be moved around at will, possibly make it the field ready, electric ready, so we can just plug in these very low-usage LED lights, we can move them where we want them. Instead of installing 20 lights on the, all over the field, we can just concentrate five or 10 lights on a particular game that's up there. And getting back to the, to the, to the turf, again, that turf, as that rubber crumbs break down, you get black smudges on your skin, and it really is absorbed by your skin. It's very nasty stuff, very nasty stuff. So, again, I think if we maximize, and maybe the town could look at contributing to maximizing the fields behind the school, and maximize every square inch of field that we have naturally, I think that's, you know, more of a prudent way to go, and with the portable lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
While he comes up, I could also add that, you know, my, our three children played high school sports competitively, and I always felt better when they were on turf than they were on natural grass, for the injury reasons that we talked about tonight. And whatever little pebbles ended up in the car, we vacuumed out.
Thank you for the opportunity. Sanket Shah, 265 North Street.
I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Sanket Shah, S-A-N-K-E-T. So when we initiated the study, we had three main concerns for the kids. One was safety on the current ground and how it will be resolved. Number two was the opportunity to play for the kids, because right now, we, we, our community and our kids are at a disadvantage when they play with other towns. Most of the towns that I've visited in the neighborhood have lights and turf. And the third was around the material that will be installed. From the feasibility study that you've done, can you comment on those three issues and how we plan to resolve them?
I can, it's a long discussion, but as far as the field does exist today, we obviously believe, and the study shows it, it should be renovated. So the condition of the field currently exists today needs renovation. As far as the playability of the field, if you were to repair the surface and have some mixture of natural grass and synthetic turf, it's going to increase your playing time, not necessarily daily, but make it a little bit longer, so you can start maybe a little more baseball or soccer a little earlier in March, and probably take it a little later in the fall.
Can I pause you one second over there? Can you give some statistics around how much playtime are we increasing when we go from grass to turf?
You know, a lot of my statistics on grass is based on the stadium managers nationwide, whether it be the smaller stadiums for high schools, all the way up to college and into pros. When you look at natural grass, again, use, which is an event, a baseball game, a soccer event, you want about 14 to maybe no more than 25 events on a grass field in a week. So that means, add up practices, add up games, it's 14 to 25 total. Right now, you're like, triple that.
Yes.
So when you're, when you're triple that, and this is, we're going down to a grass section, I have a blade, I have roots, and I have the sub-some, the roots go down even further, you're just cutting off the blades and wearing them out, you're killing the first inch or two of root zone, so what's below it just dies, it doesn't get sun, so you can't get it back. The only thing to get it back is to actually dig it up and put it in sodding. And that's why you see fields that are re-sodding, or you might drive around and see towns that put the big white mats down, so they've actually tilted it up, re-seated it, and they're going to let it sit for three months. So you need rest time. So if you're going to overuse your field, you need to be able to shut it down. So in the shutdown periods, they're anywhere from 30 days to three months. In other communities I work in, they have four or five fields, so they have four or five grass fields, they can rotate them, they can shut them down, they can do what they have to. I just, you don't have that ability.
Correct, we're limited to one field today.
One field, and you overuse it currently, right now. Your usage that I received, because I didn't, it's not my data, says you overuse it right now, as you, as it sits there today.
Okay. Have you had any incidents where residents have reported issues with the turf that you have installed personally?
Synthetic turf?
Yes.
No. So synthetic turf is new, but it's not that new, it goes back about 15-plus years. Our technology has changed from being just okay, and you've probably seen some articles in the paper about the doors, fine fiber that wore out quickly. They've come through that with science, and they now got to a real good monofilament fiber that lasts 15, 20, 25 years now. I mean, we, we put in, I shouldn't say we put in, because it's not our product, we designed synthetic turf fields all over the tri-state area. We probably do two or three million square feet a year. Keep in mind, I know, I know that the borough might have a few lawsuits here or there, when you design athletic field, it's a highly contested facility. When somebody's child gets hurt, the first person they sue is the guy standing with the mic right now. So I'm very concerned, whether it be product down, clear zones, surface type, I probably have more concern than you. I do care about your children, because I have a 10 and 11-year-old myself, but I do care about my liability policy, because it would run out real quick if every parent sued me for a million dollars every time- sued me for a million dollars every time my child got hurt. So I don't personally have any incident on a field that's been reported to our liability policy in, it's over 10 years. And I could say we've never paid out of them.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Frank Paddy, 30 Dillingham Place. The first one, I think the reassuring part is, everybody who's gone up here seems to agree that something needs to be done for the benefit of our children at the field, and you all should be commended for considering undertaking such a large project. I'll leave my own reservations on turf until I hear more information. As far as lights, it's kind of refreshing to hear that you can limit that overshadow and overcasting. What the mayor said is what I'm more interested in, and perhaps, when you have these special meetings, I don't know if you can elaborate further, but the time limits. Years ago, someone, I don't know if it was the mayor and council, or if it was the planning board, or the board of adjustment at the time, approved an outdoor bar in the town, music. And I didn't know about it at the time.
Who was that?
So it was at the assembly, and it was at the American Cut.
Did they approve that?
Yep.
That was approved?
And for people who lived on Dillingham, and John, and the surrounding areas, Thursday night became a nightmare, because the bands played well past 11 o'clock. And those of us who had children, needed to get them to school the next day, it was really, the decibel level was very high. Now, that was said and done, and probably will be grandfathered in, and not the issue. But I think the bigger issue is, if you can control the overshadowing of the lights, and somehow, as a governing body, limit the time in which the residents affected, you know, be party to not only the lights, but the noise that's created, I'd be very interested in seeing what kind of ideas you can come up on timeframes, because the lights may not be an issue if you can do that.
So I could just, real quick, if you want a good example, go to NewProvidenceBorough.org, and Borough just be O-R-O. About four years of a New Providence battle of this issue of light timing. I think they passed a really good ordinance that limits two things, maximum pole of height, 60 feet, light shut-off time at 9:30, and the only person that has control over the light shut-off time, recreation director, no coaches allowed to do it, lights automatically shut off by computer at 9:30, I believe it's 9:30, it might be 9:00, a couple lights stay on, and they go off 10 minutes later for safety. It's been in place for four or five years, it's worked great, it's worked so good, we're building the next field with lights on it, right now as we speak. That's how good it worked. And the people that came to meetings that complained the first time, came back and said, you know what, this worked really good. We're really happy you've kept up with the ordinance. And so there is a good example out there, if you want to follow.
Thank you. I'll get to that.
Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. I've been living here now 30 years. I don't have little children, so I don't have to worry about artificial turf and lighting and all that, I don't live on that street. But what I wanted to say was that our field has been worked on two or three times before that, and I don't know how many millions were spent. As a resident with children at that time, I didn't see any improvement to the games that the kids played, we had no improvement in some kind of a hut where you could hide when it was raining, we had no community center, we really don't have much as far as anything for our children. Obviously, my children are all grown, and it isn't something that I would say is 1,000% important to me. However, I do feel that the parents who do have children who are playing on that field should have a safe field. I'm not 100% sold on the artificial turf myself, I'm sure there's injuries that happen on artificial turf as well as natural grass, but I would like to see some kind of shelter for when it's raining, for the residents or the family members that are there when it starts to pour on them. I would have liked to have seen some kind of, a thing where the kids could play, you know, if it's raining out, that could go into an enclosure where they could have some kind of activities. This is something that, after spending millions and millions, and I'm sure it was millions and millions of our tax dollars, and to just still have just a little hut where you could get a hot dog, and three little horses to dance on, you know, as a resident and as a mother, I would have loved to have had more for my children, and I hope that, I know you guys are working on something, and I think it's great, and I hope whatever it is, is positive. Thank you.
Andy, can you mention?
Okay, I could just, we agree with you on the shelters in the areas for play during wet weather. We're including, or at least recommending, three shelters, one for each field, around each baseball field, and we're also recommending somewhat of an activity area, something like a bandstand that's covered, big enough to be used when it's raining for events and stuff under it. If you had some community night, you could have something set up in there that could be utilized for a community night. And that, we believe exactly what you're saying, you should have that stuff on that area.
Good evening. Glenn Luciano, 20 Lorrie Drive. Just a point of clarification, please. You mentioned just a second ago, one-
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to-
Luciano, L-U-C-I-N-O, 20 Lorrie Drive. First name's Glenn.
Thank you.
You mentioned a few minutes ago, one field, then you just said a second ago, three fields. Is it, maybe you're just, you're, are we losing the 60/90?
No. So on, in the, we provided four concepts, we think are realistic for it. Currently, the site has a 90-foot baseball field, really a 40/60 baseball field, and a 40/60 baseball softball field, with a multipurpose across it diagonally. We propose to keep that same number of fields inside that complex, just give you some options for organization in multiple areas of play.
And earlier, you had said, because of the pole heights, not high school, but once they leave Little League, you go to a 60/90.
Right.
So how does that impact on the height level? Because technically, they're not high school, but my son was, you know, at a Little League.
Good point.
And it was 60/90. If you're going to keep the 60, I'm sorry, if you're going to keep the 60/90, you have to be concerned about the 60/90.
Absolutely.
Okay, so just if you can clarify that, because I'm not sure, because then that might limit, that might, and I don't have an issue, but I mean, I just wanted a point of clarification.
Right, we're, we haven't designed yet, and I don't think we're at the point where they made the decision on lights or not lights, but what I'll tell you is, if you're going to limit pole heights to 60 feet or tree height, it's going to be very burdensome on a 90-foot baseball field, because they're going to hit the ball over the lights.
Absolutely.
Some Little League kids can still hit over 60 feet, but it's not a lot. You have to make a decision. Do you want to have those games? And I will tell you, those games are seven to 10, 10 games a year, so they're not a lot. And I would tell you that if they're only 7, 10, 10 games a year, you probably could sacrifice to hide the lights and have them day games, because it's not like there are 100 games, and the other games are less. And based on usage, I don't think the 90-foot field needs 100-foot lights, I don't.
You talk about usage, do we have the details in the sauce about, I know you said you got it from the rec department, and I have mentioned here before, I think, when you first were here, and I'm interested to see what the details are of the usage, because of beyond, of anybody for the field, and I think I mentioned it before, is that, just because the rec says that there's 30 soccer games, and I'm making it up, I see every Sunday, adults out on the field playing soccer, or playing any other game. So I'm just trying to understand, and I mentioned it when you first were here, what was your, what was the information you were receiving, and is it just purely rec, or did someone really look at the field? Because there is other activity taking place outside the field, so it's, from what I heard you, it's just what was provided by the municipality?
Correct. In the report, we list the hours or events that were scheduled through recreation, or as given to us by the Little League, because they schedule all-in games. Any pickup games or games that did not receive a permit are not covered in this report. And that is something, those games are really bad on your field condition, because those games will play in a field where it should be played on, when it's too wet, or the turf is at risk, and that's a huge problem. And you have that problem here, we have no way of measuring it.
Right, I just wanted to understand if it was included. I know I'm not going to expect an answer tonight, but I think for our general knowledge, and for the next, possibly, when you do the presentation, or we're going to discuss it, I would like to know how far the lights poles would be from the nearest residential area, or home. That, I think, is important, because, I mean, if you live on, and I'm not going to say the gentleman's still not here, but if you live on Stamford, and you're 500 feet down the road, it's different than this gentleman who lives right next to the field. And I think it'd be important for at least us to be able to say, this, the closest home, which is more than likely going to be this gentleman's right here, the corner of his lot is going to be 75 feet away. Now, I understand we have that line, but I think it's important information for us to know.
We survey it, so we can tell you the exact distance-
Okay.
-from a pole proposed, or at least where I think would be a pole's location, to any home. It's a significant distance in this case.
And I probably, I figured that you did have that, but it wasn't mentioned, and I think as a counterpoint, I think even though besides the lights, and where they're going to shine, and how we can shield them, or how we can direct them, it's important, because, like I said, I live two blocks away. It's not ever going to affect me, it might not ever affect, it might not ever affect this gentleman with the way we could shine the lights, but I think it's important. My other point, I think just for clarification as well, we keep talking about, you know, the commercialization, which I'm against, I wasn't even for the other high school using our field, because they weren't really doing their due diligence with what they were supposed to be doing. So it's really just what we're using now, in my opinion, that I even stated the last time that you were here, I hope we're addressing something with the parking. Lines on the street, we have people, I complained, I'm not complaining, mentioning, people park in the middle of a crosswalk. Haven't heard one person say, "The crosswalk is blocked with a car." To me, that's more dangerous than the crumbled rubber. You know, when someone has to walk between two cars into a crosswalk, that's very dangerous. And it's still happening to this day. Well, maybe not right now, but I mean, it's still happening pretty regularly. And that, to me, is more of a concern, a safety issue, because people go to the park not to play on the field. People go to walk their dogs, to ride their bikes, you're blocking a crosswalk. And, you know, what a simple thing for a line, just to paint, to say, "Here's where you park." We all know they're going to ignore it anyway. I mean, to a certain extent, people don't care, but you know what, if we have some enforcement or warning or something, I mean, I've mentioned it when you were here six months ago, whatever the date was, I still see it regularly.
So we, we had, we had our traffic guys, our department do traffic counts, and look at Johnson, look at the crosswalks, and look at proposed parking. I believe because of space orientation, three of the four concepts of proposing a parking lot on the north side of the field, north of the playground, a 28-car parking lot, it's basically proposing parking on the street that you could mark, or not, you are in a residential area, so marking spaces is not always the most desirable, you could mark them, but we're also looking at things of traffic coming, which are enhancing those crosswalks to make it impossible to park on them. So it does get into that detail in the report. All of what you're saying is highly valid.
I think it's important, and I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to-
That's good comment.
...make a point that, you know, to me, the safety issue of the crosswalk is more important than, you know, I'd say 50% of the people, like my son doesn't play the sports anymore in town, but I know he goes to the park. You know, crossing the street, to me, is more harmful potentially, and especially with the speed, and I'm not, I mean, even the speed. Roberts Road, I said, guy, 50 mile an hour. I watched that sign at the park, 45 miles an hour. People go with that. You want to talk about a hazard, you know what I mean? I'd have my son rolling that crumbled rubber, you know, versus getting hit by a car. I mean, it's crazy, but, thank you very much.
Thank you. So Andy, oh, Mary, Mary, they will close.
I'm Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I think all the comments that Mr. Hippolyte gave regarding the, what we're going to learn when we have the special meeting, and the questions from the members of the public, I'm just a little disappointed Mr. Councilman Aversa and Councilwoman Ellen Park are more concerned about what Mr. Aversa has on his iPad there than listening to and following the comments that are being made.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to clo, oh, yes.
Hi, Raffi Jaffrey, 25 Snyder Road. I'm the president of Angled Eclipse Little League. I want to thank the mayor and council president for bringing this issue forward, and I think something definitely needs to be done. Thank you for your leadership and support for Angled Eclipse Little League, and thank you to the council as a whole for considering improvements to Johnson Field. Couple of quick points from the Little League's point of view. I mean, one, we participate in District Six, it's essentially the eastern part of Bergen County. Every other town in this district has lights or turf. Our kids are at a competitive disadvantage whenever we go play night games away from Angled Eclipse, we don't do well, practice time, all of the same issues that you brought up. So that's one. Two, I mean, I played Little League here 30 years ago, there was no travel team, so it was something you did maybe once a week. The narrative is completely false. We are fielding about 10 teams this spring, so from April 1 to June 1, it's about 100 games in about a 60-to-70-day period. So, you know, our nine, it's a competitive baseball program, our nine-new baseball team won an elite tournament this past year, our 12-new district team got to the finals of District Six. Our 10-new team last year and this, last year and the year before, made it to the semifinals. There have been four interleague titles played among District Six, we've won two out of the four in the last two years. So it's a competitive program, as to echo what Coach Tom said, we need a field that mirrors the energy enthusiasm of our players and coaches. We have, you know, and so I think the narrative is different from what I hear here. Our coaches and our kids need a field that matches our enthusiasm. There are over 100 Little League parents and families, a lot of them don't come here, but we're looking forward to continuing this conversation, and you'll see a lot of them at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public portion? Oh, yes.
Hi, Lynn Norton, 9 Willow Drive. As you're thinking about the turf fields, and we know we have a strong Little League group that has strong feelings about the Little League field, but the people who are, might be underrepresented, I think you have to also talk to them when you're looking at a major turf field, you got to talk to your parents at softball. Remember, they wear shorts. Remember your soccer players who wear shorts. Boys at least have covering down their legs, and there's nothing worse than those turf burns. I have soccer player, and the bigger they are, the harder they fall, the bigger the burns. And they're nasty. So it may be appropriate for the baseball group, but please consider the other, the other sports, and the damage it's going to do to those legs. Thank you. And as far as the lights, I guess that's up for other discussions.
Okay. Is there anybody else? I'd like to close the public portion on this, so that Andy can move forward with the other three things that he has to discuss tonight.
Oh.
All in favor? Okay, next up is the police building, Andy, if you don't mind. Can, you can sit down, you've been standing for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rashad, if you have to leave, it's fine, don't feel like you have to stay here.
Yeah, we wanted you to know about-
I'll get you, I'll get you. We wanted you to talk-
You know what, you want to give them mine, and then give them-
Yeah, give them yours, I'll get you another. It's great.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Thank you so much.
On the, on the police building, I was, I was asked to attend a walkthrough of the police building. Initially, it was to look at the locker room and look at lockers. So the police department had, or has proposed to replace their lockers in their locker room, and we started a walkthrough, which kind of led us through the police locker room, and then to like an auxiliary locker room, into some other areas in this building, back to where the old clerk's office, administrator's office used to be, and then finally back to the back shed and the generator. So what we're proposing to do for you is kind of take a bigger picture, look at this building, and even maybe include the community center behind this building, and before you start spending money- So what we're proposing to do for you is kind of take a, a bigger picture, look at this building, and even maybe include the community center behind this building. And before you start spending money just on lockers, and I think the lockers, I think that was around 70-some-odd thousand dollars, we wanted to just take a little look for you, present a picture for you, if you just do a short-term improvement and do lockers or create a locker room that is handable to your current staff, and plus, your current staff may be a female officer, or expand it and create better meeting spaces for them and better office space for them. Maybe look at all these rooms and these chambers here and look at the building next door. You do have a storage shed in the back which is somewhat antiquated, your generator area is somewhat antiquated, and I think the police, when I walked around, I realized that over a 20-year period, this building's kind of piecemealed little by little going forward. So it was, okay, we made this change, let's just do this. And they kept piecemealing it to where now you have a building that's pretty segregated, separated, and probably not a, a great workspace, it's really not. Doesn't have adequate meeting space, office space, locker room space, none of the above. So, you know, we're proposing to take a good look at that. Mark Neville's helping me get some plans for this building and the building next door, and we're going to present to you somewhat like the feasibility report, just a quickie, and say, "You can do the following, here's some ideas," and open you up to a conversation of whether you want us to look into it further or not, or hire an architect, or what do you want to do. It just is where we're at with that at this point.
And if I can just update the council mayor?
Sure.
From, from a finance standpoint, the reason that we're bringing this up, we have to give Andy the permission to go ahead and do this, is obviously we're preparing a budget, and we need to know, you know, what some of these things should cost and what type of project we're looking to, to undertake. You know, when you start looking at one item, and then you realize, well, if I fix this, then I need to fix that, and if I fix that, then I need to fix this, and then all of a sudden it grows, you, you want to make sure that you're looking at the bigger picture. And, and even though you're fixing one item right now, you know, what's going to happen three years from now? Am I going to be ripping that out and then having to do more? Well, let's just look at it right now as a big picture as to what the police need in this building for them to operate and, and function best, as best possible.
Right.
But I think that that's right, that's how it started. The lockers were separated, they didn't have a shower.
Yeah, one of the things, yeah, one of the things we saw was that you had one set of lockers for your regular filing rank, and that had showers and bathrooms, and you had another set for the officers that didn't have showers, they had to cross the hall.
And that was only because they didn't have the room.
And then you had another separate area for possibly female officers, it just doesn't.
Doesn't flow properly.
You need, I think you should just look at it, see if there's a better opportunity. I think, you know, the building has gotten segregated because you used to have building department here, and it's, it's really changed over the years.
Exactly. So if it's okay with the council, when Andy's all done, I'm just going to make a motion to, you know, allow them to, to, to finish that and get that information back to us as quickly as possible, Andy, because we have to vote on, obviously that would be a capital improvement, and that would be putting additional monies into the budget, so we would need that as, as soon as possible, Andy.
Okay.
Any questions from the council?
Do I make a motion?
Let me, let me ask, isn't this just covered by your borough engineer contract?
That I'm directing you to work.
Yeah, yes. I mean, it is a specific task, so I, I mean, a lot of borough, mayor and councils like to vote on it.
Yeah. I'll just make a motion to allow Andy to get us all the information we need in regards to upgrading the police building and looking at the community center as well, and how, big picture, what's the best way to, to move forward.
Just can present some options for you.
Exactly. I need a second.
One second.
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
Eve Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
McMaro?
Yes. M. Park?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the assessment ordinance regarding Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street.
So, oh, she has to recuse.
Can you just repeat that?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. The next item up is the assessment ordinance for Fifth Street.
And for the record, Councilwoman O is leaving the dais as she is recused in this matter?
So Fifth Street is a, is a holdover problem from the prior administration, as say, dirt path that we have to deal with, and we're going to deal with it now. So Fifth Street is a gravel road. You come from Fort Lee into Anglerwood Cliffs, and it's a, a road that's been gravelled over, covers three homes, a vacant lot before the three homes. Some of the businesses on the west side actually have openings out onto it, and now there's a proposal in front of the planning board right now for two lots just north of existing three homes. It, it's an issue, obviously.
Andy, did you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's an issue, obviously, because of the condition of it, because there's more people developing on it, and a number of cars now accessing it. I think at this point, you're at a point now after what's happened, and as we move forward, where you, you probably should just do an assessment ordinance, improve the road the right way, put it to borough standards, and put this to bed. That, that would be my recommendation. This discussion has taken place at the planning board council, uh, planning board committee, and they've asked me to even come to you and ask for an assessment ordinance at this point?
Okay.
What is an assessment ordinance exactly?
Andy, explain that.
Yeah, okay, I, so we've done a few in a number of towns. The assessment ordinance is, we will produce for the mayor and council, a list of blocks and lots that are adjacent to the road, will produce what we think is an estimated cost to improve the road, and the mayor and council will pass an assessment ordinance that actually is not assessed until the project is completed and done, and you have an actual amount that's assessed back to each person based on the frontage they own.
It's to the property owners?
Adjacent to it.
I see.
Everybody who's adjacent to it pays their percentage based on their frontage.
Okay.
Basically by the point.
Correct. Exactly.
What do you want the council to do tonight?
So what the council would do is if they want to go forward with it, they would give me authorization to produce the blocks and lots that are adjacent to it, come up with what we think is a basic cost for the project, they would do the simple ordinance, which would obviously not be assessed until the project's completed, and that would give the borough.
The amount, in other words.
Right, that would give the borough the ability to actually bond for it and do the work. And then that bond is repaid by the, by the adjoining residents, or tax law.
So sort of, just like a study or an assessment, right?
Yeah. It's a tax assessment against the real property.
Right, but for tonight, he's looking, he's looking to evaluate it.
You're just going to evaluate it.
Correct.
So we need a motion for that. Can I have a motion?
Can you re- repeat it for me? Motion. I don't know what the law is.
It's a, it's a motion.
Motion authorizing borough engineer to produce a brief study of the.
It's cost, cost and property owner.
Cost and property owners, frontage.
On Fifth Street.
If you heard what Andy said, members of the planning board approached you.
For the last year.
For the last year, and then at the last planning board meeting, I think there's another application that's.
Is it, is on tomorrow?
It's on for Fifth Street, and they're trying to figure out, what do they do with the road? So this is something that he needs to look at, and they're, the planning board is sending him to ask us permission.
Are you making the motion?
I made the motion for him to look at it.
Does he have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Aversa?
Just a study, correct?
That's all.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
McMaro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay, it passes. The next item for you, Andy, is B3 zone.
Yes.
We're not opening to the public right now.
What are you going to ask? He can ask the question. You know, let him finish and then we'll.
Let's let him finish, because he's got it going. The, the last item is the B3 zone. Again, at, at the planning board level, pretty much from Bayview Avenue, south on both sides of the road, the B3 zone, I'll say is tired, is the best way to say it. You have buildings that are not in great shape, you have some vacancies down there, you have retail, and some restaurants that cycle a lot down there. I think it would be pertinent for the council to request the planning board to set up a committee to look at the B3 zone. That means the planning board would set a committee, they would engage the planner for the planning board, to actually look at the zone, make recommendations, and they would come up with a report, just a report for you. It would come back to you as a council to say, "This is what we recommend for changes in the zone," whether it be use changes, height changes, whatever it may be, and they're going to present a report back to you. It will give you an opportunity to look at that report and decide whether you want to, eh, institute it and create an ordinance around it, or send it back for more comments and questions. You have to start somewhere, it has to start with you, rep, you know, having them.
I agree, yeah, thank you for explaining that. I briefly updated the council, because when we were going through the budget, I had to put extra money into that budget line so that he can then, so the planning board can then take care of that and then give us the report back, which is.
Okay, so we're, we're going to do that.
So, Councilor Park.
Is the planner, are you the planner, or is the planner?
I'm not the planner. Another major person, they hired a major person to do it, so, or, they hired, the planning board has a major planner as their planner, so they would use that person, which Eileen Bannera is her name.
Which would be a, it's a separate.
Yeah, it's their appointment.
Expense as opposed to the borough.
No, no, we were at the budget, and you saw there was a, it was 30,000, was it 30,000? We put in that line item, and I said that Andy would be explaining that at this meeting here, this is what he's talking about.
So what would happen is you would allow the, the planning board to set a committee and hire the planner for that function.
I see.
It's your, your authorization.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Just, wait, raise the motion.
I am, I am, yeah, let's take, the motion, the motion's to recommend the planning board to set up a committee, to hire a planner to do a study of the B3 zone and make recommendations back to you that you can either do act on, kill, or send back to them to relook at again. It doesn't bind you to do anything.
Before we make that motion, is it a motion to ask them to look at the master plan?
No, 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 this is the evaluation of the B3 zone.
Okay, and if the, I talked to the chairman, like, so if they make their, if the planner then makes their recommendation for the B3 zone, and that comes back to the council.
You can cast a note.
Then we look at it, right? And then we evaluate whether we are in agreement with it or not.
Yep.
And then does the master plan have to be changed at that point?
Well, there would be.
I just need to know from a financial.
Not yet, no, not yet. So your master plan's been reexamined, and it's good for a few more years yet. So you don't need to reexamine your master plan.
So if we like that recommendation, I'm not saying, I'm trying to know what the recommendation might be, but at that point, then what happens?
You would, if you like it, you would actually ask your attorney to prepare an ordinance to, to change your current ordinances to adopt a new ordinance for the B3 zone to allow that plan to be implemented.
And that's, if it's costing you more money, that needs to be.
No, well.
I'm just asking from a budget.
Other than legal fees, we've kind of.
Okay, so there are special notice provisions.
Yes.
For all property owners where you are changing a zone.
Right.
So if you're going from B3 to B2, you have to give notice, and then there are special hearing procedures.
Okay.
But it's an ordinance.
Right. All right, so can I, can somebody?
Councilor Park had a question.
But is the motion tonight to expend the $30,000 for a study, I guess is my question?
Allow the planning board to.
The planning board to do it.
Okay.
We could not give them $30,000. We just put.
No, no, no.
We put a special committee.
Yeah, we put 30,000, extra, extra.
Yeah, I think, I think what we, we, when we talked about the planning board, we encompassed what the entire cost would be for them to do it, with whether they have an attorney on the planning board, they have a planner, they have meetings they're going to set up, possibly public meetings here, so I think the overall estimate was $30,000.
Just because it's there doesn't mean they have to spend it, but if we don't put enough, then they can't do it.
Right, correct.
What I like to do is have the borough council state what the motion is, and someone can somewhat of it if you're somewhat to do so.
Yes, pursuant to the municipal land use law, the planning board has requested that the governing body consider looking at the B3 zone and studying whether changes should be made. So the motion is authorizing the planning board, through committee or otherwise, to study the B3 zone and make an official written recommendation to the governing body.
Or also expending an extra amount of dollars to do this study, right?
Yeah, to not, to maximum, right, to a maximum amount of $30,000.
That's already.
That's the money they can spend.
That's a, that's the planner's report.
And then have attorneys.
Andy, I have a question for you. Did you say that the, the planner for the planning board is also Mazer?
It's a Mazer person, yes.
So you're like under the same umbrella, but you're, you're.
I mean, it's the same company, it's not, it's not me, they hired, the planning board hired a planner from Mazer.
Oh, okay. But it's the same company.
Same company, yes. I think that.
Does somebody acknowledge that someone moved?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Yeah, I feel like, can I make a motion to table this, just because I'm, I feel
like I need a little more information?
Okay.
Right.
This, this is the governing body authorizing the planning board to study the issue of improvements, changes, or recommendations of the B3 zone in the borough of Anglerwood Cliffs. To do that, they may, they may create a committee or however they see fit, and they may authorize their planner to spend, or for the study to cost no more than 30,000. How many properties are in that B3 zone?
I've got that, I don't know.
Okay, all right. That's the motion.
That's the motion.
Can I have a roll call?
And we had a, we had a second in the first.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Is that your vote?
Yes.
E. Park?
Clarify that.
I'm going to have to say. Okay. O?
Can you come back to me? You have to go in order, right?
Is that?
No, it's fine. She defers it at this time.
McMaro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Time's up?
I'm going to say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kochanova, as a courtesy, I know you want to say something.
Make a motion.
Yes, let's have a motion. Please, please come up, I know you had comments to make.
Mike Kochanova, 11 Fifth Street. Can we just clarify what you did? So I'm a resident there, so you're trying to figure out, is it an assessment for Fifth Street? Yes. So there are three homes, but then there's like four lots. Is it everyone who has ownership of the properties on that street?
Yes.
Businesses and residential?
Everybody.
What if they don't, what if they say, "I'm, I'm, this is vacant land, I'm not going to..."
They can't, they can't.
Okay, what if they can't afford it?
Then it gets assessed against their taxes as lean.
Okay, and is there a, do we have a say as the residents in the amount that the borough spends?
So the way it works is, the way the state sets this up, and I do do this a lot in a lot of the towns I work in, it's a very direct calculation. The borough has us prepare an estimate, we give them the blocks and lots that are adjacent to the roadway. Turn it over, we actually prepare plans, go to bid, we have an actual cost for the project, we build the project, then we have an actual final cost to the project, we take the final cost to the project, and assess it back to every owner based on their frontage on the street. So your frontage may be one, one hundredth of the street frontage, you get one one hundredth of the cost.
That's, I mean, I have a fifty by a hundred lot, but is it, it's not, that's all I'm looking for.
It won't be a.
Because also, there's a development plan, but they might say, we're going to spend two million dollars now, and does the borough, does the borough spend any money on it, or is it the entire cost will be assessed?
The borough, the borough ends up paying the professional fees for engineering and legal.
So my tax dollars don't go toward any of the street repair?
No, your assessment does. The assessments will cover the street repair.
Okay, all right, that's what I did.
It'll be a separate tax bill to you.
Mayor, I just, I just want to state for the record that Councilwoman O. left the dais during the public discussion.
Do we not? Two questions, Fifth Street, do we have a mechanism in place? You said there's going to be a new development. I've experienced that a majority of time, people who do developments on road contribute towards improvements on the road, which could.
Correct.
Reduce the added assessment to Mr. Kochanova and everybody else on the block. Do we have a mechanism in place for that? And my second question, so I'm quick.
Okay.
Is, go ahead, I'll let you finish, I lost my train of thought.
You know, it's really easy. The municipal land use law which governs the planning board is specific on this. Anybody who builds on a road that's not improved, they're responsible.
Excuse me, I've been told that there is a, there is a litigation in there.
No, there was a settlement.
And there is a settlement, so I'm not quite sure who you're speaking about.
I'm not speaking, I'm speaking in general, so I'm not.
Yeah, I'm talking in general, I'm not talking any further. Yeah, so this is just about.
Property owners, developers, contractors, they can all, there's a mechanism for assessing that.
I hear what you're saying. Yeah, so it's, and we've had this discussion with the planning board, and we'll have it again at the next meeting for it. They're responsible for their width of the road, or their frontage of the road, half the width of the road, it's all they're responsible. This, this has been tested in court way before I was even born, and that case is specific, you can't charge them to replace the whole road.
I understand that, but there is development agreements where builders will come in and do the whole road.
Oh, if they volunteer.
Well, there's the ways that you can make them do that, but. My second question is, is why is, why are you doing that and not the, why do you have to authorize something that really, in my opinion, I could be wrong, falls under the planning board? Why is, why, maybe it's the fact.
Well, I think I. They spend the money.
I have the finance here, we, I put a lot into the budget when I speak to the department heads.
Right.
We have to authorize spending within that target.
Yeah. Well, it's my understanding, and I may.
Well, I think I covered better. The planning board, the planning board only approves land use applications, the planning board doesn't improve roads, do borough contracts, improve our own structure, it's done at this board. Okay, so, Andy, have a motion to close the public portion. Okay, thank you, all favor.
Who moved it?
Somewhere down there. All in favor of closing the public portion?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Andy, thank you very much, it's kept you here, I appreciate it, well done. Next up on the agenda is the LG groundbreaking ceremony, we had that yesterday, I attended along with some of the council members, Borough Clerk attended, and it was a great success, rain brings good things, we're told, so it was tented. I got to say a few words, thank LG for staying, for being part of our community, and I closed with, and you can see my speech, I think Lizette put it on the website, I closed by saying, you know, Teddy Roosevelt said, conservation means development as much as it does protection. So we're, we're all for a good balance here in Englewood Cliffs, of development with protection of the cliffs. Next up is the Student Community Committee, this is an ad hoc committee that I created last month with the, with the council's approval. We need additional high school students to be on that committee, so if you have people that you could recommend, please have them reach out to me, and perhaps the superintendent of school, she may know people as well who have graduated, yeah, so we need about five or six more people on that committee. We want to get our teenagers involved in the community, and, which brings me to my next point, community service project with Palisades Interstate Park Commission, I've been speaking to their executive director about having a service day where Englewood Cliffs gets together and most likely picks up litter as a community, and we'll get some pizzas delivered down at the boat basin. So we're going to try to find a nice day in spring to do that, when there's no sports going on and people could attend, it's open, it'll be open for all ages, so we're going to get a date and let you know about that as soon as we, we have that. Then, so in addition to service, connection with the Palisades Interstate Park, we want to do activities with the Palisades Interstate Park Commission, and I don't know if you're all aware of this, and if you're not, here it is, that there's a lot of activities that we could sign up for as a community. There's hiking, that guided hiking tours, which we just, you know, we'll pick some dates, we'll sign up. There's also historic hiking, because there's a lot of history as well in these cliffs, and we could have a historian tell us more about the history rather than me just making it up, but trying to convince you that that's really what happened there, but there's, there's actually a lot of good things we can do and reconnect with the Palisades Interstate Park. So everyone's really excited about us doing more of that, I was speaking to Mr. Rockefeller yesterday at lunch, he loves the idea, loves the fact that we're trying to connect, and also, as I call us, cliff keepers yesterday, you know, we've learned a lesson, let's, let's learn and continue learning and protecting. Which brings me to my next point, there's a pending U.S. Coast Guard proposal to establish ten new anchorage grounds for barges and other commercial vessels on the Hudson River, and what, what this emanates from is the North Dakota oils being trained to Albany, put on barges, and being shipped down river to Port Newark to be exported. And what's driving this is for the first time in, in a long time, the U.S. oil companies are allowed to export their oil to other countries, and this just happened last year. So that's creating a demand for river traffic, and for whatever reason, the oil companies want to use the river as a warehouse, as opposed to just going onshore into tank farms and waiting for the price of oil to get where they want it to be so they could sell it at the price that they want. So there's a lot of opposition to this, I'm monitoring it, the closest anchorage to Englewood Cliffs would be off of Yonkers, which is across the river, so it would, it would mar things a bit as well for us in terms of view, and also potential hazard, pollution, all of the above, so that is something that I'm going to keep monitoring and getting more information, we may need some people to start writing letters, all right? So just think of it as your public portion of this meeting, but you're doing it in writing and not directing it at me. That's all, I had, and in your business, we have committee reports, and council members, if you have committee reports, just blurt them out right now with your name and what committee.
I just have a quick comment about our technology that we use here as a council. It's the second time I was called out for using my technology. The first time was the phone, and I want you to know, sometimes I do text my daughter, she's home by herself, and that is something I am aware of. But that time I was on, my computer wasn't working, so I was using my phone to access our agenda. Tonight, when Mr. Hippelitz spoke about New Providence, I pulled it up on, on the website, and that was something that I think I wanted to see, since he was speaking about it, Mary. So that's what we're doing. So I showed Councilwoman Park just exactly what he was talking about, there's a really lovely plan that they did for New Providence, similar to what they're recommending here. That is something that the technology allows us to do right here, so I don't need to go do all other things, it's here. If it offends anyone, please let me know like you did, but don't accuse me of things.
No, I didn't accuse you of anything.
Well, yes, you did, you said I wasn't paying attention, and I didn't appreciate that, Mary, because I was paying attention.
All right, you know what?
That's all.
That's fine.
So technology's a wonderful thing, and I understand some people are unaware of what we are capable of doing up here, and I just want the audience to know that sometimes we are on it doing, doing council things. Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, and did you have any reports?
No, no, after all that, I need to.
I don't have any reports.
Councilwoman O.
Everything okay with transportation, Mary?
All right.
Okay, well, we had our first budget meeting, I thought it went very well, we had, I thought we had a great turnout. I thank everyone for their participation and questions. We had a lot of questions as a council, I hope I was able to answer all of them so far. We finished all departments except for police and the construction code of the stores. We're anticipating within the next two weeks to finish those, and I will be asked into the council as soon as we finish our meeting, I asked everyone to bring their calendars so we could pick a date for our next budget meeting. Within that budget, within that special meeting, we did discuss many capital projects that we will be looking at, whether we decide to do them or not is a separate issue, and obviously, two of the largest projects will be whether or not we do do anything with Witty Field, and if we do, what we do, and with the, with the police department. I know for those of us that were there that day that did that walkthrough, that's very important, and we need to address it, and I look forward to what Commissioner Hippelitz says, Mayor, and how we can figure out to put it into our capital budget. Very excited that the full-time rec director, I think that Richard will be a great asset to the town, and I think that his enthusiasm and dedication to children will, will benefit the, the town as well, look forward to his, to his ideas. I am going to make a statement, for those of you that think whatever I'm saying is funny in the back, I didn't, I didn't know I was that much of a comic, but I'm going to, Mayor, I'll put on the committee report, new business, old business, you know, I got served with a lawsuit again, so that was new, but it's old because that's the fourth lawsuit. So that being said, and, you know, the lawsuit that I was served with is very disappointing, in that it generates legal costs, and it creates a device-ness to our community. I'm aware of the multiple ongoing politically motivated lawsuits that have been leveled against me, and although I have no control over those lawsuits, I do have control over my response. So, I choose to stay focused on effectively representing the people of Englewood Cliffs. The residents here have entrusted me to work on their behalf by the virtue of the fact that they've reelected me, and I will stay focused on all the great projects our present mayor and council have initiated, may initiate, and I will continue to do so, in addition to improving the quality of life for all Englewood Cliffs residents. And that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I would just add to that, you have to understand that, when, when you bring a lawsuit for political purposes, yes, in the back, you're taking away judicial time from people who really need judicial intervention. You're talking about children who are trying to get, whose mothers are trying to get child support, or fathers are trying to get child support, you're talking about alimony, you're talking about people who actually need judges to intercede on their behalf, and what you're doing is, you're using the courts as a political tool because you lost an election. So like, what I always say to you is, we're willing to work with anyone who's willing to work with us, and we're also going to defend this borough from the frivolous lawsuits that you all decide are in your best interest, and I'm watching you shake your head, and then I'm hoping that we get to talk to you in court, okay? On behalf of the borough. Next.
Yes, regarding about the planning board, the planning board approved FCA Realty LLC's resolution for 100 Silvana Avenue, and for the new business, we discussed about the 600 Silvana Avenue LLC's use of parking space, the board attorney will draft a letter, and the members will review it prior to approving it. And we discussed about the Fifth Street 2 new application, we're going to keep, continue to discuss about tomorrow, our regular meeting, that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman O.
Mayor, on the Board of Ed, I apologize, this month I couldn't attend the Board of Ed meeting because of a Chinese New Year commitment, Carol subbed in for me. I understand teacher of the year awards were provided to two teachers, one in North Cliff, one in Upper School. The school also decided, the BOE also decided to change the start time to have the closed session start first, which I understand previously always ended the meeting with the closed session. I know they also had discussions about improvements to the field over at Upper School. We suggested as, Carol suggested as a member of the council that we could potentially speak together with the Board of Ed because of the various improvements we discussed tonight, and see if there's something we can do together and have, have synergies. Relative to the police department, we had two meetings at Borough Hall and a walkthrough with Chief Chaffee, Lieutenant Reagan, and also, sorry, Captain Reagan and Lieutenant Hill. Among the issues we talked about were the fire alarm system upgrade, we talked about communication systems, there's some upgrades that need to be made there as well as lockers. Andrew, Andy Hippelitz looking at all of that, and in the next two weeks, I think we'll have a clearer idea on, on things. Relative to DPW, I'm sure they're working hard right now, getting the brine ready, getting the salt ready, I think the storm starts at three, four o'clock tonight, so I am for sure going to be keeping an eye on things and making sure that we're ready to go, got Mark Neville's cell phone ready. We also had a budget meeting, we talked about, I think DPW does a very good job, they looked at different ways to save money, including, right now, there's certain vehicles that they have that can be rehabbed just by replacing the bodies, so instead of purchasing a completely new vehicle, I thought that was a very good idea. They were also looking at other capital purchases, including a camera system to look into our sewage, sewage system, improvements to the community building, and also streets and roads, painting streets and roads. Fire and safety, we had one meeting with fire and safety on budget and capital, they're also looking at certain upgrades, including the utility truck, also forty respirators is something they're looking to purchase. Overall, what we've budgeted for fire and safety for 2017 is very much in line with 2016. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Park and Councilwoman Wu, who were put on the ad hoc committee.
For what?
With me for the interviews.
The personnel committee.
I'm sorry, personnel committee for the new administrator, they've been working very hard, we've had three meetings, interviewed a lot of candidates, and I just wanted to thank the two of them for all their hard work.
Yes, thank you.
The two new council people that really jumped in and.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you know, it's great, and I appreciate you working all together so well, we're going to do good things like that. I don't have anything else, but I do want to tell you that, in case you haven't heard, it's going to snow. Borough Hall is going to be closed tomorrow.
And school.
And the schools are closed, so be safe, stay off the roads.
To adjourn, please.
And have a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.